Good evening, everyone. Welcome to beautiful downtown Grand Forks. This is Grand Forks City Council's Committee, the whole from Monday, July 8th. Under item one, called order 1.1, welcome to roll call.
Weigel.
Here.
Soski.
Here.
Berg.
Here.
Lunskey.
Here.
Friedols.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
And Veen. Do we have a call?
Good, thanks. Under item two, updates and informational items, 2.1, presentation, MPO, Safe Streets For All. Ms. Holford, good evening.
Good evening.
Ms. Weber, good evening.
Good evening. Thanks.
Let's make sure that, there we go. Everybody can hear me okay. Perfect. So, like Stephanie said, my name is Blue Weber. I'm here with an engineering firm called Bolton &amp; Mank. We are with the MPO, working on a Safe Streets For All study. So, this is a study that we'll get into a little bit more throughout the night. But, I just kind of wanted to give you a quick agenda on what the things that I'm here to talk about. What is the Safe Streets For All? What are scheduled that we're looking at? Some different engagement opportunities and updates, as well as some of the more technical aspects of the study, which is the high injury network, as well as the peer review. And then, what the next steps are going to look like over the next 18-ish months, from when we started. So, Safe Streets For All was a study that was created by the federal funding, to really create a support for planning, infrastructure, behavioral, and operational initiatives to prevent death and serious injuries on the road and streets involving all roadway users, based on a safe systems approach. So, this may sound a little bit relevant with the Vision Zero project that's happening in a lot of communities. North Dakota has a very strong Vision Zero project. What this is, is more looking at those local levels. And then, also, the federal government has set aside infrastructure dollars on this. So, once we will be complete with the study, the MPO/cities are able to then apply for the funding that will be opened and available after the safe study is in place. So, looking at different comprehensive safety action plans all across the nation. So, what is the safe systems approach? This does look at five different elements, that are really supported by six principles. So, I'm not going to get too deep into this. It's very pretty obvious already on the screen. But, talks about safe roads for all users. So, everyone from pedestrians, cyclists, those with mobility issues, but still making sure that we're using safe vehicles, and that we're creating safer speeds, safe road designs, and also looking at post-crash care. So, anywhere that maybe we have a high injury network in the community, how can we create some actual engineering around the solutions on those? So, some different ways that this looks is, this right here is a high injury network of looking at the interstate roadways for the city of Nashville. And this really starts to look at some of the accidents that are happening, but then also the severity of those accidents. So that way, we can start to analyze and try to create solutions around those. So, we do this by creating different profiles around those accidents. That really gives us an indicator of how severe those accidents are. Maybe it was because of speed, maybe it was because of the angle of the crashes, different things like that. So, that is going to be a huge part of this safe study, is going and looking at all of that information, as well as talking to the members of the community, looking at it through the lens of community-based organizations, and really advocating on their behalf to make sure that it's a good, sustainable project. Some of the different priority actions that came out of the city of Knoxville's Safe Streets For All project was looking at the support from the Vision Zero, so at that state level, as well as looking at those different policy decisions and network locally, on how to make it safer for all users. So, a lot of this is very high information. I want to let you also know that even though I'm powering through this, I'm here and available for conversation. We have a lot of different engagement opportunities that we'll be going through, over about the next year, but want to make sure that you know that I'm always here for questions as well. So, our comprehensive safety action plan components. So, we really have eight components here. So, the leadership, commitment, and goal-setting is really where we start on this. So, this is working directly with Stephanie and the team at the MPO, but also creating a steering committee that guides us through this entire process. Then getting into the planning structure of it, starting to look at those different elements from everything, from the information and the data collection, as well as the engagement. Looking at some of the safety analysis, so looking at what's already in place between infrastructure and policies. But then also getting back into that engagement collaboration. This is where I talked a little bit about those community-based organizations, making sure that we're talking to those organizations, finding out what we don't know, what the data isn't also going to show, because we know that numbers show one thing, but the lived experience can also be a little bit different in that sense. These Safe Streets For Alls also put a really important lens on the equity side of things, making sure that the voices that are sometimes underserved in these conversations are still part of the process. And then also looking at those policies. So, that's everything from policy review, and also processing any of those changes that are going to be coming up. Then we start to do a strategy and project selection. So, that's where we start to get into, what are some of the intersections? What are some of the maybe of the corridors? What are some of the things that we can really arm the city engineering department on both sides of the river, the MPO, and any planning organizations, to really oversee this idea of making sure that it's going to be sustainable? So, this jumps into the project schedule. So, like I said, right now, we're right kind of in that first phase. We've had a couple different public input opportunities. We had our open house last month over at the Empire. We also did a pop-up at Art Fest down at University Park. We'll be over at Skidmore Park, working with the University Park neighborhood, to make sure that we're still furthering people onto our website, to keep giving us input. One of the ways that we do that is we do give people an input opportunity with an interactive web map. So, they can go on there, they can tell us where maybe their favorite intersection that they get a drive-through is, or maybe their favorite corridor for biking, or different areas where they think that they see some improvement. So, this can be everywhere from the north end, south end, along the river, maybe on the greenway, but also out by the airport is another spot that we know has been a big topical issue right now, and is something that we're also looking at in this study as well. So, like I said, those public engagement opportunities, really our goal is to direct people to our project website. This is a place where we have that interactive map, we have surveys. We also put a lot of our project information there. So, anybody who wants to find out what's going on with the project, where their next input opportunity is, as well as what phase we're in, all of that is housed internally alongside the MPO, to make sure that that information is there. Like I said, we already had a couple input opportunities. We have more going all the way throughout the rest of the year and into next year, including some project interviews. These will be one-on-one with people in the community, to find out maybe where their most treacherous areas are in the city, find out from them what their lived experiences are when it comes to creating safer streets. One of our partners on this, Alta Planning, is actually working on a high injury network right now. So, this, instead of just looking at simply the crashes that are happening, but really starting to put it into a severity index, so we know, based on what's happening in those accidents, actually how severe they are. It's really easy to say, maybe this intersection isn't safe, but if vehicles are traveling at 20 miles an hour, that's going to have a lot different of a critical crash rate than maybe, like we said, an intersection out by the airport, which will put a lot heavier scrutiny on, to try to figure out what some of the solutions are that we can create. This also has to deal with that critical crash rate, making sure that we're not just factoring in the injury rate, but also where those crashes themselves are happening. So, once we take that, we do combine all that into this high injury network. That's something that will create a dashboard, that will not just be brought to council, but also be brought to the engineering department and brought to the general public. We want to make sure that all this information is being shared as transparently as possible as well, so that way everyone knows the process that we're going through. With that, some of the things that we're really looking for at the end of this project is some analysis around some intersections. So, looking at where those injuries are happening, looking at where those crashes are happening, and then starting to determine what those solutions are around those different intersections, so that way we can arm everybody with the information that they need, to go back out and get that federal funding to help to create some of those solutions. The geographic parity is that important information that we look at when ranking these, because every intersection is not the same. This changes based on how many vehicles are coming in, as well as all of the different information that goes into it. So, everything from what the weather looks like, as well as where it's located, as well as some of the growth that's happening in both communities around it. The other thing that Alta and Bolton &amp; Mank are going to be working on is a peer review. So, this is identifying that safe systems approach by really comparing it to like communities across the country. Ones that already have some safety action plans in place, but also ones that have similar demographics, similar growth patterns, as well as similar traffic networks and things like that. So, making sure that we're being very relevant with our information, and pairing it to similar communities. That peer selection really looks at four different communities, based on climate, based on population distribution, a quality analysis, countermeasure selection, and plan outcomes. So, this is taking that information and finding out, okay, well, what have they already tried here in these peer communities? And we'll jump into those peer communities here in a second, but this is really to just make sure that we're on the right path throughout the entire project, and that we're looking at it with not just the lens of locally, but also what's already been done in some other communities. So, those peer communities that we're looking at right now are Greater Madison, their MPO, very similar as far as being a college town. It's a little bit larger, but a lot of similar networks, as well as also weather. They often have to deal with a lot of snow and cold up in that area. Knoxville's regional TPO is a little bit larger, but also very similar networks, similar city in the size as well. And then southeast, Michigan's COG, this is their council of government, so very similar to our MPO, even more similar to maybe a Fargo metro area MPO. And then Ann Arbor, Michigan, was one that we found that was really good in a lot of the ways that they're introducing some pedestrian elements, and ones that maybe we could learn So, next steps in this, continuing that engagement, making sure that we're out there in the community, that people know what's going on. We're working with five community-based organizations. It's really important for us to make sure that we're working with them, not just to make sure that we're building trust with the community, but we're also hearing from representative organizations about the community. And then, working on that refinement of the high injury network. We actually have a steering committee meeting tomorrow, where we're going to be presenting those findings to everybody on that steering committee, and continuing that peer review. So with that, I will stand for any questions.
Yes, Ms. Lunskey.
Thank you for the presentation.
Of course.
I just have a couple questions.
Yeah.
Open houses, I have been at a couple open houses with you, and the attendance is sometimes very sad.
Mm-hmm.
Have you, and I am excited to hear how Art Fest, your pop-up was. Do you ever do online or like Zoom open houses?
So, it was one of the reasons why, for the public engagement side of this project, we really went with some of those online tools. Grand Forks, there's a lot of opinions, which is always greatly appreciated, but like you said, the attendance can be hard to hit sometimes with those groups. And so, trying to give people the opportunity to give us their feedback anywhere, has been something that's been really invaluable for us. So, what we use is input ID, and it's this interactive web map, like I said, where people can jump on there. And it's really cool to watch people not just be able to give us that feedback, but then interact as well. So, when somebody leaves a comment, you can see other people's comments. Other people can go in there and say, oh, yes, I completely agree with this, or, no, I wouldn't maybe do it this way. And so, it gives us and the community the opportunity to still interact, not just in that public open house setting.
So, that that interactive is web-based?
It is, yeah. And it's, it still is live. And so, one of the things that we often face as a problem when it comes to web-based services like that, what about the people who don't have access to computers, or internet, or any of those sources? So, that's where our relationships with those community-based organizations really start to change that conversation, and make sure that we're actually getting out to the population who sometimes is undervalued or underrepresented in these conversations.
And then, you had mentioned you were going to meet with some people one-on-one?
Mm-hmm.
I'm sure we all have people in our ward that we would like to send to you. Is there a way we can introduce you to people you think would maybe be helpful?
Like I said, it's always, it's one of my favorite things about being able to do this work in my own home community, is that I, it's important for me to still not just look at this as work, but it's also where I live, and so it's, I want to find out how it can be beneficial. So, I don't know if my email is directly in that, but I can share that with Todd, or the engineering department has it as well. And I would love any soft handoffs. For me, coffee conversations are a really easy way to talk about the work that we're doing, and also be able to get feedback, without it always being so heavily focused in on maybe this one topic, but we can talk about the broad range of things that we're doing on it.
Thank you.
Of course.
Additional questions? Mr. Veen?
Yes, sir. Thanks for the presentation, too. I think the one thing that I took away from this was the necessity we've seen some time for the airport-road-highway county-five intersection improvement. That's been studied several times before, and still have not solved that one. And I think there's urgency to that. And I don't know how that's going to necessarily impact the timeline that you're under for the rest of the project. And so, here, see somebody else who, and so, I'm really concerned about that, and how far we go. I do remember, or I've heard of the stories that used to be at the Grand Forks Air Force Base entrance on Highway 2 also, and the solution there was a grade-separated crossing. And sometimes, I think, sometimes some of the solutions don't really always help the problem, and something like that possibly would. So, I'd like to make sure somehow we would consider that as you're looking at options for solving that.
Yep. So, there's actually a meeting we're having next week with some DOT reps, as well as a few members in the community, and we're going to start talking about steps forward. The DOT did recently share with us that they had a study, a more recent study done that was finished in February of this year. So, a lot of engineering numbers and crash data was shared with that in that plan. So, they are eager to move forward and some next steps. So, there's already a meeting set up for next week, where we're going to start talking, and then bring other people into the conversation.
And I'd be really interested in that. I don't know if that'll come back to the MPO board, too.
It will.
I would like to have feedback on that.
Yep. It was actually a recommendation that came out of our last board meeting, to meet with DOT reps, and that moved forward rather quickly.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Of course.
Because that intersection is not within the city limits of Grand Forks, it's in our extraterritorial. So, what are the boundaries of the geography that you're going to be studying?
It's in the-
So, I think we definitely should be looking at that intersection, but are we looking at Merrifield Road, too, or?
It's in the MPO planning area. So, both the airport intersection that we're talking about, all the way out to Merrifield, is in the MPO planning area.
Great, perfect.
Yep.
Thank you.
Of course.
Ms. Weber, yes, sir?
Yeah, I was just going to reiterate kind of what Stephanie was saying, and also, with this project lasting up until about next August, I think that that intersection is one that does need some, not immediacy in the same way that maybe a lot of this work does, but it does need more conversation, and some more focus on it. And so, I think it was really fun for us to be able to have that conversation of, how does this study affect the airport road? Well, maybe it is just arming and giving some better information on it, but also making sure that we're supporting the conversations that are happening, kind of a parallel with this project.
Ms. Weber, why are you briefing us today if you've already been working on the project? Why didn't we brief the month ago?
We just got kicked off. I mean, it's not like we're super, super far into it. So, we've really started, as far as community engagement, it was really to introduce people to the project, allow people to start giving us that feedback. Part of that schedule is that this does go up until next August of next year. So, we're not, we're not so far into it, but we wanted to make sure that we weren't just coming to you before even starting.
Great. And you're briefing planning and zoning Wednesday evening, and when are you briefing East Grand Forks?
East Grand Forks City Council is tomorrow night.
Tomorrow, so three nights in a row, very good.
Yes, and then, East Grand Forks P&amp;Z is on Wednesday as well.
Great, okay. One additional question. How does this, how does this, maybe this is a question from Ms. Holford. How does this differ than our five-year transportation plan, the safety portion that we do when we're studying and doing the five-year transportation plan?
So, that's a federal requirement of us. This was actually a grant that we applied for about a year ago, a joint application we did with both cities, as well the MPO. We applied for a $400,000 grant, we're awarded that. And this is, so we can actually go after more funding, so the implementation part. So, this kind of opens up more doors for you guys to implement safety design and infrastructure grants.
So, but the information that we're gaining from this will be incorporated into our next?
Always when we-
Long-range transportation plan?
Yep. Always when we update our plans, we always look at the last plan we did, and other studies we did in the meantime, so.
Great, perfect. Sounds good. Thank you. Further questions? Ms. Weigel, yes, sir?
Ms. Weber, how does law enforcement play a role in this? I think we've all seen, and probably Chief Nelson could attest to it, that people will call in and say, you know, there's a car that's doing 50 miles an hour down my side road, and then law enforcement gets there and they're doing 32 and a 25. How do you take the data that might be available from, you know, the city PD, or the highway patrol, or the sheriff's office, implement that into having a more true picture, instead of just citizen input?
It's where, the people who are far smarter than me, especially our GIS team, is so fantastic at pulling that information. And it's always, to me, one of the most important parts of our projects, is that we can't just look at data alone, but also, we can't, exactly like you're saying, just take storytelling and the feeling and the emotion alone. And so, it's where we really start to collaborate that information together, to figure out the whole picture of, what is it maybe that, maybe it is an element of a design to be able to slow it down, or make it feel slower for people who are in the area. Maybe it's a better tree barrier, maybe it's things like that. And I don't, I don't want to go too far down the rabbit hole of coming up with those ideas, but it is something that our GIS team does pull that information, and it's, so they're constantly reaching out to city GIS teams, city engineering, city planning, to get all that information. And so, it's a lot of correspondence that's happening behind the scenes as well.
Sounds good. And so, you guys will be communicating with the city police department to get whatever you need from them.
We will. And a shameless plug for at least the company that I work for is, one of our team members who we brought in, in Eden Prairie, actually had retired as the police chief there. And so, it's been one of my favorite things, is bringing him in on projects, because he gives us a lens internally, that I don't think, I didn't expect to have, coming and working for Bolton &amp; Mank. And it's been really fun to be able to not just have that data behind it, but also then be able to take the storytelling, and that feeling, and understanding of what it's like to actually police the roads that we're designing, and have those in-house as well. So, so yes, we will be reaching out to them, but it's been a cool part about being internally on this team.
Perfect, thank you.
Of course.
Thanks. Further questions? Thank you, Ms. Weber.
Appreciate you being here tonight.
Discussion items, 3.1, decision document for Project 8653, reconstruction, North Washington Street from First to Eighth Avenue North. Ms. Crinkle, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy, and members of the committee. I'm joined here tonight with Sarah Cecilman. She is a recent hire that we've gotten within our engineering department. She's been with us now for about the last month. She comes to us with a PE, professional engineering license, as well as about 12 years of experience here in our community, working with various consultants. And with that, I'll hand this off to her.
Welcome.
I'm Steve. Thank you. Good evening, members of the committee. So, tonight's staff report about the reconstruct of North Washington, from First Avenue North to Eighth Avenue North. What we're discussing tonight is the, it's called the Documented Categorical Exclusion, or DCE, document. This is a document that is vital, a vital step and required for federal aid projects. And what the document itself does is evaluates all potential impacts of a project. And so, as part of this process, to secure federal aid for the project, which this has been considered a regional project with the DOT, the city must identify its preferred alternative, and ultimate, but ultimately, the DOT and Federal Highway Administration actually make that decision on what project is ultimately pursued. And so, tonight's, you know, recommendation is to, in a concurrence with the proposed concepts in this DCE, and a little bit of background for you as well, prior to final recommendation is, being that this is a regional project, that means that federal and state funding cover 90% of eligible project costs, with the remaining 10% being the local share. Estimated total project costs for this project in 2028, which is when the project would be slated for construction, are at 12.3 million, leaving the city's local share of the 10% at 1.23 million dollars. So, you know, primarily, the primary issues that this project will address include the deteriorating pavement underlying most, or underlying North Washington Streets. As you remember, there's been several mill and overlays, most recently in 2018, but a mill and overlay just isn't a sustainable rehabilitation for this stretch of roadway anymore. There's ADA compliance issues. For example, there's street lights that are in the middle of the sidewalk. And then, in addition, inadequate drainage. The neighborhoods to the west of Washington Street, in that area, you know, experience some issues with stormwater mitigation. And then, lastly, and probably maybe the most complex portion of this project, is the access management concerns, where even a MPO study dated 2011, recommended the removal of 20 driveways from First Avenue to Eighth Avenue North, for improved safety, as an access management recommendation. So, and on that note, obviously, that has a lot of stakeholder input that you can imagine would be coming, coming to light. And so, as part of this DCE process, there have been postcards that were mailed to the landowners and business owners, in advance of both an in-person business owners' meeting, and then an in-person public input meeting. And so, all of those comments have been included in this DCE, for the city's review, and DOT and Federal Highway review as well. Then, the last two pieces of the project, in terms of improvements that it would make, are replacement of the traffic signals at both University and Fifth Avenue North. Replacement of those signals is important, due to the age of the current signals, and then, as well as sightline distance. So, those are, having stoplights at those intersections is very important for safety. Then the last two pieces of, of the project in terms of improvements that it would make are replacement of the traffic signals at both University and Fifth Avenue North. Replacement of those signals is important due to the, the age of the current signals, and then as well as sightline distance, so those are, having stoplights at those intersections is very important for safety. The traffic signal at Second Avenue North, however, is be, going to be removed as part of this project. This signal no longer meets the DOT's warrants for a traffic signal. And so with, you know, all of that, what I've described so far is what's been called alternative B, and the only other alternative to that is a alternative A, which is a no-build alternative. And so, but what has been proposed along with alternative B is an option one and an option two. Option one proposes to have a, what's called a three-quarter access intersection at Second Avenue North. Three-quarter access intersection essentially prohibits left turns or through, nobody could go right across Washington Street on Second Avenue. The, the DOT, city staff is defaulting to DOT's comments and, and how they feel about this option, and they feel very strongly to just remove this traffic signal at Second Avenue and have just stop signs, but not incorporate this three-quarter access intersection. And the main reason is that they feel strongly that the removal of all these driveways is going to significantly improve the safety on, in the corridor. And then not only that, but with the current Washington underpass project, there is a three-quarter access intersection going in at First Avenue North, which would essentially mean that if option one was to be included in this project, then you'd have back-to-back three-quarter access intersections, and the DOT is, is definitely not a fan of that idea either. And so, as I mentioned, staff is defaulting to DOT comment and recommendation to not include option one with alternative B for this project. And then lastly, option two is, you know, part of alternative B, there's baseline storm sewer improvements, and so basically, all that does is takes existing storm sewer, replaces it, and not much changes. And so option two proposes to have a trunk, what's called a trunk sewer, and so the trunk sewer would, would run from First Avenue North to Seventh Avenue North, where it would tie directly into a 72-inch line that goes directly to the nearest downstream outfall. And ultimately, what this is doing is bypassing all that stormwater that comes off of North Washington, in the Washington corridor here, no longer needs to go circulate through the neighborhoods to the west of Washington and goes directly to a large pipeline and out to the outfall. So with that, I, again, staff recommendation is to concur with the project concepts as proposed, and select alternative B without option one and with option two.
Thank you for that, Ms. Cecilman. Questions, comments? Ms. Osowski?
Yeah, I thought you did a really nice job your first time, but I, next time, I would like a photo up with maybe if someone could point at exactly what intersection. All we have in our packet is a small map with two different photos with lines on it, so it's really hard to determine exactly what you're talking about. But you, you guys did send letters to all the business owners and everything about removing the driveways, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And I didn't see any of the feedback in here, can you tell me what some of that feedback maybe was?
You know, it's, the feedback in the comments in the DCE itself that are, is quite minimal, believe it or not, but that, I would suspect that that's probably because this has been a project in discussion for, well, at least since 2011, so, you know.
Do you know what any of those comments were from the business owners, is my question?
Nothing, I, I don't recall any of them specifically, but I could absolutely share that.
Could you maybe send those to us, so we have those, just to make sure? How many driveways was it in total?
20 between First and Eighth.
20 that are going to be removed?
Mm-hmm, but every single, every single property has access from-
Right.
-the side street.
Okay.
And then any, any alley that is currently gravel would be paved.
Okay, thank you.
The access, only the access, we wouldn't be-
Or just the access, excuse me, yep.
Who covers the cost for the concrete curb and gutter and dirt when we remove the, the driveways? Does the city cover that as part of the project, or is that part, is that part also special? This is 801010, right? Yeah, it's covered, great. Yeah, Zlonski?
Can you explain how you, so how you take Second Avenue North and not allow people to go straight?
To go across Washington?
How about using First as an example? Because that's what we're going to do, is not allow people to cross at First, so it would be the same for Second.
So are you familiar with the intersection on Columbia Road that goes into Walmart?
Actually, David, if she, if we could have, whomever's running the meeting will pull up the staff report, or if you could pull up the staff report, we can take a look at the picture.
Certainly.
Because I think the picture is pretty clear online.
So this right here, this is what is being proposed to be constructed as part of the Washington underpass project, and this is over at First Avenue North in Washington, and so you would have this concrete median island that would be installed, along with a narrow median upstream and downstream of it as well. This way then, vehicles that are on First Avenue, or as we were discussing, Second Avenue, they're on First Avenue itself or Second Avenue, they would only be able to turn right, they would not be able to go straight to continue along that avenue, or turn left onto Washington.
And that currently is there already?
That's the plan, that's what we're voting on tonight for First Avenue, but DOT did not recommend that for Second Avenue, although city staff wanted it, DOT said it's unnecessary because we're taking out the 20 additional driveways.
So we're still taking out the stoplights at Second Avenue, and it'll just be a normal intersection, you can go straight through, is what we're voting on. Gotcha.
Yes, Mr. Veen?
That, I really appreciate your explanation of that, although I have a problem with it, this is the first thing I will say. As you look on Second Avenue North, and I was just making this, there is no businesses right there, but you go down to the university, you got the ERC, the nutrition lab, the new softball complex, the high performance center, the football practice, UND campus, STEM Center that's just to be built, and for westbound traffic, it would seem like there'd be value in having a light there, even though it doesn't meet warrants. I just wondered if they looked at warrants, but not only now, but what you would expect in the future, when you continue to have that development, because then they're going to have to all go down to university and go over and then come back again, and with the loss of the parking lots and stuff. So that, I would love to see a follow-up on, on this here, to find out truly what those warrants, if, why they're not as warrant, not as warranted. I don't know how far away we are, if it's close or whatever it is, but as we talked about, it isn't just data, sometimes it's other pieces to it. So I, I would see that we could take a, take a look at that, is what I would ask, to see how close we are to meeting the warrants on that, because I just think that-
It's not happening on Second Avenue North.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, anyway, we would do that. My second comment is, is I like the idea of running the storm sewer line up to Seventh Avenue North where we have an existing large diameter. If I remember right, the way that large diameter is, pipe is already full, and so now you're going to add still more water to a full storm sewer. What is the impacts of that going to be on the neighborhood if you start putting the additional water into that storm sewer?
So the, this project maintains the existing 78 feet of right-of-way, and I note that because we're talking about a marginal additional amount of impervious surface with this project, and so what, while we're making that direct connection now to Seventh Avenue, what we're not doing is sending the water to the west through the neighborhoods first, then to the north, and then to Seventh.
Okay, that, that helps to answer it, because that's the way it was going, would have been that way. It's more direct, should be more efficient than-
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Good questions, other, yeah, Ms. Osowski?
Is it required that we put one of those things in there? To make it so you can't take a left-hand turn, I, from the DOT, is it required? I, I don't like them at all, and I guess I don't understand the purpose of having one at First, when you're still going to be able to do whatever you want on Second, you know, it's just going to deter people a little bit more from that intersection, but, and also, like, have, why do we have to have that there? Has there been a lot of accidents at that particular intersection, like?
In general, I think that the concept of that three-quarter intersection came up because of the removal of the, the signalized intersection. And so I think that was the consultant's initial take on, since there's not going to be a signal there anymore, is there something else that we have to do to try to minimize and proactively take care of a safety concern at that location?
But there will still be a stop sign, right?
Yep, there would still be two-way stop signs that you would see further up on Washington, like from north of Fifth Avenue up to Gateway, it's two-way stop signs all the way up in that area as well. This would be just like that.
I would really not like to see any of those in our town besides over by, what is it, that Starbucks right there on Demers and Washington, to take a left. That's the only place in town I would vote for one, but, thank you.
Yep, I'm sorry, Mr. Wagle, yes, sir?
David, what's, if we're taking that stop, stoplight out, obviously, we're going to be pushing more traffic to University. I don't know how many cars that is per day, but I know we just did a mill and overlay on University within probably what the last five to 10 years. If we're pushing additional traffic, meanwhile, we just reconstructed Second Avenue North from Washington to 18th, 17th, somewhere in there? What does that mean for University Avenue? Are we going to be, is that going to deteriorate faster, causing it to have to be reconstructed sooner?
Well, I think part of the discussion this evening is, there is that discussion for a three-quarter intersection at Second. Staff's recommendation is to follow suit with DOT on not including a three-quarter intersection at Second.
Sure.
So you would have just the two-way stop signs there, so traffic can still go across, traffic can still go through there. I know one of the comments-
I think they can, but I don't think they're going to, right? If I'm sitting at Washington and Second at 5:00 in the afternoon, do you, is it realistic for me to be able to cross there in any sort of reasonable time period?
That would likely be a challenge, however, the rest of the day, it would likely be a lot easier for you. And I know one of the comments that we did receive from the, I believe, the GameStop or the game store that's in that corner, one of the comments that they had was when high school would be let out for the day, vehicles would come up, and if there was a, if the light was red, they would just bypass through their, their parking lot, get to their driveway, and then take a left to go southbound on Washington. So this is hopefully going to, in removing the driveways and still having a stop control at that intersection, hopefully it's going to improve that safety aspect. Hopefully, we're not going to see too many changes in regards to traffic. I do agree that during the rush hour periods, we're likely going to see less traffic, because you're not going to have that controlled traffic signal there. And traffic at that point in time would likely go up to University to get to that signal that's there.
Thank you.
Mr. Veen, further questions?
Yeah, one, one further question, and it's about the same intersection. The one thing I dislike about this, and we'll say, is if you're west, eastbound, no, I'll say westbound, you're coming from the bottom going up to the top here, you can simply drive around the median and go straight through. It's supposed to not stop that, but you can do it, and that's happened in other locations where you try to fit an, an island in the middle when it isn't designed for that. Now, if you have that, that median that's in here, that's on the east side, you actually move that to the west side, connect it to the center median, you absolutely eliminate anybody from going across. So I don't know what the purpose of the one on the east side is, I think if you moved it to the west side, you'd at least have much better traffic control.
And I'll agree with that, and that's definitely a comment we can pass along to the DOT as well.
Good idea. Further comments, or I'd entertain a motion to do something if anybody's interested?
I motion we don't put any more of those around town.
Okay.
That tracks with the staff recommendation.
So I, I do have a question, though, before we vote or motion anything, so I do see that at the top it says like option one and option two, but then when we look at the photos, it is alternative B, or, you know, are, is one of them for option one, and one is for option two, they're not properly labeled.
It is, I agree, it is a bit, it is a bit odd. So alternative B is doing the project. Option one is, so doing the project means that no matter what, Second Avenue traffic signal goes away, in, as far as this document is concerned, right? Option one means that that traffic signal goes away, and then there's the island there. But not doing option one, which is staff recommendation, means that it's just stop signs on both sides. And then with option, so then they called it option two, is to do the trunk sewer or to not do the trunks, trunk sewer? Other way around, I guess, option two is doing the trunk sewer.
Staff recommendation is to do the trunk sewer, correct?
Correct, yep.
Okay, so?
So it's, so it's technically alter, staff recommendation is to concur with project concepts, which is alternative B without option one and with option two.
All right, I motion that.
You moved staff's recommendation?
Yeah, I moved staff's recommendation.
There's a second by Wagle, further discussion?
Yeah, Ms. Veen? My concern still hasn't changed from what I said with needing to look better at the warrants, so as I vote, that's going to be the rationale.
Okay, very good. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose the same sign.
Aye.
Which carries Mr. Veen's defense. Thank you. And 3.2, Health Strategies Grant Funding Award. Ms. Berlin and Merrick, good evening.
Council President Sandy and members of the committee, good evening to our newest members, welcome. My name is Haley Bruin, I'm the Nursing and Nutrition Manager at Grand Forks Public Health. Tonight, I'm joined by McKenna Merrick, and we're here to present a competitive grant from the North Dakota Department of Health and Human Services that we were recently awarded. We are asking for your approval so that we can accept the award of $94,559, which does require a local dollar-for-dollar match. If approved, we are not adding any new positions to the Health Department, nor will additional funds be requested. This funding would really allow us to align state priorities with local priorities around food insecurity. Food insecurity is a relatively new term, so I'd like to highlight to those that are listening that food insecurity is the social and economic condition of having limited access to have enough food for all members of a household. When this funding application was released, we were interested, because this will allow us to bring state funds into our community to enhance some of the work around food insecurity that we've already started. Through this work, we'll build local capacity to increase access to nutritious foods, we'll work with community partners, and implement best practices around food insecurity and nutrition. This award would really allow us to make sustainable progress towards helping our neighbors by addressing the food insecurity that's happening in our community. So thank you, and with that, we'll answer any questions that you have about this award.
Questions about the grant award, Ms. Osowski?
Yeah, you stated that this money would help us as a city align more with the state's priorities. What is the difference currently?
Councilwoman Osowski, that's a really great question. So sometimes when the state puts out funding opportunities, being that they are on the western side of the state, sometimes they might not exactly align with what we would like to work at locally. Every couple of years, we do our community health assessment, and from that, we identify some of the priorities that we locally want to work out, that we think are important, whether it's by working with our community partners, or community input and feedback that we get. And so this opportunity, the state put out this funding award, and they said, we are looking for partners, whether that is health entities, private businesses, community sectors, that kind of- community sectors that kind of have infrastructure in place that are ready to fund a project that aligns with the state's priorities. The State Health Improvement Plan recently came out and identified four priorities, and so they were really looking for partners. We just happened in our community to be positioned really well that we could apply for this funding and to keep working on some of the work that we've already started. And so really, it's state money coming into Grand Forks community that allows us to fund some of the things that we want to work on around food insecurity and chronic disease specifically.
Can you tell me what those four state priorities are?
The state priorities were linked in the handout, the staff report that we had. There's one on workforce, there's one on cultivating wellness, there's one on enhancing-
Expanding access.
Expanding access and connection. And then there's one other one. And the two that we specifically wanted to address were really around access and promoting wellness.
And then, so, it's a dollar-for-dollar match, so we'll also have to throw in $94,000. But you're saying that this is money that you are already spending on this program, that you guys are doing yourself without the state's help?
So right now, we've started some of this work. We haven't been able to really make a focused effort on it. And so this funding opportunity will allow us to use some of the money coming out of the state and really enhance that effort. We'll actually use our match to bolster what we're doing so that in this short duration of the funding, because it is a relatively short opportunity, we'll make a more focused effort and try to get some momentum going on the project that'll lead to long-term sustainability.
Thank you.
Further, Ms. Weigle?
Ms. Bruin, is this, I know there's programs for summer for the kids to get a free lunch at some of the parks locally and get some food if they need it. Will this $94,000 actually go towards putting food in people's hands instead of a study, or, you know, here's a fancy poster? Is this money actually going to put food in people's tables?
Councilwoman Weigle, I'm so glad that you asked that question. It's a really good question. I'm actually going to let McKenna Merrick talk a little bit about what some of the scope of the project is and how the funding will actually be used, because the answer is really yes. It is going to make some changes in addressing food insecurity in our community, and I think she can really speak better to that.
Good evening, President Sandy, members of the council. Thank you for your question, member, Councilmember Weigle. So I'll just start by kind of reiterating the focus areas of our project. So as Haley mentioned, the focus of this project is to really improve access to healthier foods for these neighbors, enhance education opportunities, increase the number of organizations that are screening for food insecurity and providing those appropriate referrals as needed, as well as leading a local committee behind food and nutrition security. And so our work as public health is to really engage those community partners through the committee and through the work that we do. And so partners that are involved in the summer programs, the summer lunch programs, will be hopefully involved in our committee and the work that we do. But the funding specifically will be going towards salary and benefits as well as communication needs and project supplies.
Locally, there's already been a strong interest in food insecurity. We did host a food summit in February this year where we had over 40 local community partners attend, who are all really interested in gathering around the conversation in food security, as we've seen with inflation and price changes. Families are just finding that it's harder and harder to meet those needs. And so this opportunity will really help us locally to implement best practices so that not only are we screening more people for food insecurity and making referrals, but we're also improving the quality of food that people might be getting at those places so that we're also addressing chronic disease. That's one thing that we see go hand-in-hand sometimes with the availability of foods at food pantries and different things like programs that people might get. And so we're really looking at kind of taking this broad approach to how we address it so that we can start seeing some change.
What I'm hearing is that, so the money won't go directly towards buying fruits and vegetables for people, but what I think I'm understanding is the fact that there appears to be enough people to provide the food to people that need it, but people that need it don't know where to get it. And you guys are going to mix all that together and provide an opportunity for people to get what they need. Is that accurate somewhat?
Yeah, so really engaging the community partners to implement some of the best practices that help people get the food as well as other services that they might need, and then specifically putting that focus on healthy foods. As Haley mentioned, there's a significant correlation between food insecurity and chronic health conditions. So trying to prevent or manage those chronic health conditions for these neighbors as well, too.
Similar to what we've seen when people might go to a physician appointment, and they're screened for things like housing or domestic violence, we're really trying to create system change where you might intersect with a different community partner in their organization or agency, and they're asking those evidence-based questions around food insecurity so that people feel able to answer. And then whoever's doing the questioning can help provide them the referral, whether it's to the summer backpack program or a food pantry or SNAP benefits, so that we're kind of meeting the need for people in the community who, like you said, might not know where to go.
Thank you, Ms. Volansky.
I realize this was already asked, but where exactly does the match come from?
Councilwoman Volansky, thank you, that's a great question. So the match does come from the general fund. As part of the application process, all agencies were required to put forth a dollar-for-dollar match.
And it sounds like a lot is similar to the Blue Zones. Do you guys work with them? Or are you guys both kind of trying to do the same thing differently in our community?
Councilmember Volansky, thank you for your question. There definitely is collaboration, they have been at the table. As Haley mentioned, we convened 40 community partners together earlier this year to talk about food and nutrition insecurity in our community and kind of talk about where the existing gaps and barriers are, and Blue Zones has been involved in that community conversation.
I think one thing, if I could just brag up our team for a minute, is that we have two public health dietitians on our staff who really are the community's subject matter experts in food and nutrition. And so we really feel like this is a charge that we should be leading. We just, we're good at partnerships and collaborating with other people and really have some of that nutrition expertise that will be needed.
I guess I'm just still kind of a little lost. So it's not going to bring more food to the community, right? My, I had kiddos who went to Phoenix, and they would just announce on the speaker, if you're part of the backpack food program, come to the gym. So it's not like getting the word out about that.
So for instance, if you took a child to their pediatric well-child visit, and your provider screened you for food insecurity, as a working parent, your situation might change. As we said, it's social, it's economic. You may have lost your job recently. You may have had a housing increase in your price. You may have recently had to pay an expensive medical bill. Situations with people really do change month to month. And so when we're regular providing opportunities, such as screening at places where people intersect the agency, we're actually screening if they have food security. And then if not, we can provide them the referrals. If we simply influx this money into providing the food, the food would run out. And so we are looking at, how do we sustainably build mechanisms into our community where we might already have the funding for food, or there might be other people who are working on that? I think, for example, Blue Zones is working with the school about a repackaging-type program for students. We're trying to make those connections, really, and use those community partnerships while we're making sure that the food available to people is healthy.
So if the pediatrician sees a need, then they would refer them to you? Or where's that connection?
That's a great question. And that's still really to be determined with this project and with the insight from the committee and community partners. However, I see this as being referrals to other community agencies, programs, services, food pantries, et cetera.
Thank you.
Does that help? We're happy to answer other questions that you might have.
Any further, yes, Ms. Berg?
My understanding is that a lot of the food pantries in town don't have enough food as it is. So can you help me understand how we're going to continue to ensure that they're receiving food to make sure these additional referrals are going to have that availability?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Berg, that's a great question. And I think a lot of that comes out of collaboration with the committee as well, too. We convened this committee for the first time last month, so it still is very new and in the infancy stages. And I think that's something that, with the food pantries at that table, at the table with the other community partners, that's something that can be discussed further with them, who are actually serving those out of food pantries. However, I think there can be some strategies around, you know, donations and being more intentional about food drives as it relates to trying to get more healthier food donations in as well, too. And we have been collaborating with the food bank as well.
I think we've been emphasizing food pantries a lot, but we also are talking about things like the Supplemental Nutrition Program for families and different avenues as well. So while the food pantries do tend to be one of our bigger partners, we're also partnering with others in the community to make sure that we're getting people the help that they need at the point that they need it. I think one thing that we've seen in Grand Forks and that we're really good at is that when we bring partners together to work on a common problem that we all feel is important, we might not always have all the answers at the forefront, but we can work together usually across our unique roles and perspectives to come up with the answers that our community needs. And I think that's really what our food committee is actually doing. We've identified this as a problem, and now we want to come together collectively to work on it.
So there was a lot of interest from agencies that want to come together. They just need someone to lead the way.
Yes, that's correct. Earlier this year, when we can, we called it a food security summit when we convened the 40 community partners together. And from that, there was a lot of interest to form this local committee to meet regularly to address the existing gaps and continue working forward to strategize possible solutions to address them.
One thing we mentioned earlier, too, is that this aligns with local priorities. And one of our local priorities is really to strengthen sustainable infrastructure across community partnerships. So this is kind of a nice opportunity for that as well.
Ms. Osowski? I'm sorry, Ms. Berg, were you finished? Yeah.
No, thank you.
Yeah. Ms. Osowski?
I guess, one question I have, does it have to be the city that's involved in this? Is there not someone else in our community that can apply for this grant and take this on themselves? I feel like we're just starting another social program with the city leading the way. I mean, we have WIC, we have food stamps. I mean, there, we do have the mission, which I heard gives away like boxes of food, you know, with, I heard that it comes with whole racks of ribs that they get there. We have the pantry. I don't understand why we need to be involved any more than we already are, and especially like us leading the way. If it was, I don't understand why a nonprofit can't do it. I think the city needs to stay out of it. So, thank you.
Thanks for that comment, Councilwoman Osowski. I think that one thing that's important to highlight here is I think the match sometimes could be a barrier to a nonprofit. And also, I think when the city does get behind it, and public health, who is really good at building relationships and kind of has this reputation in the community as being able to work through some of these collaborations, I think that that actually enhances the approach of the community, rather than a small nonprofit taking it on, realizing they might not have capacity to do it, realizing they might not have the skill set for it, they might not have the expertise in this area, they might not see the need. I think there's a lot of reasons why it does make sense for us to take this on.
A quick question. Why do you suppose the North Dakota Department of Health and Human Services made this funding available in the first place?
I think that is a great question. I think when we look at the state priorities, I think Dr. Weeby is really trying to enhance that relationship between state and local. In the past, the relationship used to be very fragmented sometimes, where the state would maybe have one priority, it might not fit, it might not align. Dr. Weeby did a nice tour around the state. Some of you were maybe here for it when he came and talked about some of the state health priorities. He's a really impressive person, and I think that this is sort of a change in leadership. This is Dr. Weeby saying, we want to double down and put some money behind these efforts. We are helping the state improvement, health improvement plan, excuse me. Dr. Weeby's goal is really for North Dakota to be the healthiest state in the nation. And in order to do that, I think you have to have communities behind it.
So we're already essentially spending the money, the match money on people today.
Correct.
And so this is an opportunity to bring additional resources from the state.
Correct.
That would allow the folks that go to Altru ER or to a Sanford walk-in or to their primary care physician to be asked if their, how is their food security? And if they, I'm generalizing, if they say-
You're doing great.
Hey, I'm having a hard time. That person, their physician, or the PA, or the nurse, or whomever, would be able to say, hey, we've got SNAP, we've got WIC, we have the mission that gives away boxes of ribs and can point these people in a direction where they can get the resources that they need. Is that what you're going for?
Yes, that's the system-wide approach that we're trying to take on this. So that when the funding does run out, because this is a very short funding opportunity. This funding ends July 1st. What we're trying to do is really get that infrastructure in place so that when this funding goes away, the Altru ERs are still asking those questions. The system is still in place, the referrals are still happening. We just need some oomph behind it to get it going.
Great, I think I understand. Yes, Ms. Osowski?
So, once you get it all set up and the funding's over, are we going to step out of this as a city? Or are we going to just continue managing this program?
I think it's a great question. I think once the funding is done, the community partnerships will be in place and the community infrastructure will be in place, that there won't necessarily to be a program to manage. I think we'll always be in the business of ensuring that our community is healthy and vibrant and having the things that they need, food, housing. And so I think this is just a tangent of that. And I think that there won't be a program, so to speak, to manage when the funding is over, because hopefully, we'll have done our work, and the community partners will all know what their role is and can, will be able to fulfill that.
Great, any other comments? Mr. Friedhofs?
I had to say something. So I agree that with access to better foods, right? I don't know what the food pantries and stuff serve now, but you said, you know, that one of the priorities was chronic health conditions such as obesity, diabetes, high blood pressure, often probably exist with populations faced with socioeconomic challenges and the food insecurities. What does success look like? And how do you figure out success at the end of this program? Or during this program? It's great to say, here's some nutritious food, and you have access to it now, but how do you know that's actually making an impact?
Yeah, great question. So, yeah, as I mentioned, you know, one of the goals is to increase access to healthier foods. And ideally, we'd like to target this initially within food pantries. And so one of our metrics is to get at least two food pantries on board of adopting best practices within their site, best practices that follow nutrition guidelines that are specific for the charitable food network that help source healthier foods and then also help kind of nudge the neighbor visiting the pantry and choosing those healthier foods. And so by implementing some of those practices and policies, it can help with, as Haley mentioned, those sustainable changes over time.
Ms. Veen, yes, sir.
Very quickly, does the community health assessment measure success?
So the community health assessment informs the Community Health Improvement Plan, and the Community Health Improvement Plan is the plan that has some of the objectives that we're trying to measure. So that would be kind of more where some of that measurement would come from. This time around, we did do a higher-level approach. So rather than specifically targeting each of the six that came from the community health assessment, we tried to look at more of the social determinants of health. And so this would be like one of those social determinants of health. So then, rather than focusing obesity, per se, by having more gyms available or having more weight loss coaches available, we're looking at what kind of foods do our community have access to? Are they good foods? What are people eating? How can we kind of help in that way?
Further questions or comments?
I'm motion to approve.
Move approval by Ms. Berg, is there a second? Is there a second? Second by Friedhofs? Thank you. Further comments? Ms. Lunskey, yes?
I just can't get over the fact that you guys are so much like Blue Zones. If, it seems like what they're doing, and they're paid by Altru, they're going to have more effect on what the doctors say. Would you be open to having a conversation with them about? It just seems like you guys are working parallel to each other but not together.
I actually think we are working together on some of this. Some of this, they are already doing in a different fashion, maybe, or their geographical region might confine them to being able to do the whole community. And so I think really, we've been around a long time. We are great partners with Blue Zones. We appreciate their support on these projects. I think you could say there's some overlap to it, but I think that's with any good partnership. I think sometimes when you are in a partnership, it does, it does get confusing where one partner ends and the next partner starts, because you are working so closely together.
So you do consider them a partner?
We have lots of partners, yes. Schools, churches, food pantries, social groups, Blue Zones Project, healthcare systems. Who am I missing?
Thank you.
Further comments or questions? We have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries. Osowski descends. Thank you for being here tonight. Mr. Fieland, item 3.3, Public Health Department Fire Marshal Office Relocation, Franklin-on-Fourth Development, Grand Forks Public Safety Facilities Master Planning Updates. How are you tonight?
I'm doing well. How about you?
Good.
Council President Sandy, members of the community hall. I was last here on May 6th and gave an update on this potential move for both the Public Health Department and our Fire Marshal's Office. So over the last couple of months, further information has transpired, and I just want to give you a quick update on, number one, one of the reasons that, you know, the mayor and I approached both the Public Health Department and Fire Marshal's Office, and really appreciate of Gary Lorenz and Tess Wall, they've been, and their teams have been great partners on trying to make this work and trying to get to yes, as opposed to finding, you know, sometimes happens, all the reasons to know. So I'm thankful for them. What we're trying to do is look for a smart strategy to move Public Health closer to City Hall and our, both City Hall and the Hive, and have them more co-located. Where City Hall is, the customer service entrance would be off University, and on the second floor would house more of the office staff. And we were looking at about 30 personnel from Public Health and about five from the Fire Marshal's Office. And in particular, the Fire Marshal's Office has a constrained office over at Central Fire Station Number One off of DeMers. The other thing we were trying to do is, we knew, obviously, we've read the headlines, the county commission is going through some space utilization challenges, both with the Sheriff's Office and the state's attorney. So we thought perhaps an opportunity would be for us to move the Public Health Department with about, you know, 10,000 square feet to a new facility here at Franklin-on-Fourth with, again, about a 10,000 square foot office space, which would free up space in the county office building, in order to try to avoid building new buildings, because we, as we all know, building new buildings gets expensive. So that was the spirit in which we did that. And as you guys all know, and we hear from the citizens of Grand Forks, why can't local governments work together better to try to save the taxpayers' money? So this was an attempt to both the city and the county work together and try to save monies and create opportunities. So that was the spirit in which we moved forward with. I just want to go over some of the financial numbers, because it is budget season, the reason why here, Mr. Carlson is here from the developer of Franklin-on-Fourth. They need to know, is the city in or are we out, so they can move forward. And we're also going through the budgeting season for 2025, so we needed to determine are we going to place this in the budget or not as we move forward. So, if you recall, we were looking at an initial five-year agreement at $20 a square foot. That term would last, and then after the sixth year to the 20th year, it'd go up per CPI, kind of an arrangement, to year 20, and then we'd have two renewals. And so it would eventually end up being a, you know, a multi-decade decision. We would have outs, we wouldn't be in there together, but the initial term would be 20 years and we'd have two renewal opportunities. Based on that $20 a square foot, that is about a $210,000 annual payment the city would have to make regarding that space for both the Fire Marshal's Office and Public Health. I spoke with Tess Wall. Now, this would just be on the general fund portion of Public Health, but Grand Forks County pays 33% of that, of that. So that would go into our calculation. The other thing we looked at, what would the fit-up be for that space? And certainly Franklin-on-Fourth, they're going to have general amenities, and then when you get a commercial client that wants to move in, then you're going to have to pay for fit-up costs and that. That was estimated to be about $1.5 million, but also in the lease agreement, it provided a $25 per square foot credit. And that credit is about $263,000. So the one-time fit-up of the space, if you subtract the credit, is about 1.242 million. So about, we'll say a little over 1.2 million, one-time cost. We also looked at some soft costs, furniture, IT fit-up and some miscellaneous. That one-time cost was $440,000. So if you looked at those two one-time costs, it's about $1.68 million for one-time costs. And then, again, the rent starting day one is about $210,000. So those are the costs that we were looking at. Talking with Marion Stor said we would hire, the one-time cost, we would find city cash to fund that upfront, and then obviously the annual payment over time. And then we do have a, kind of an MOU with, or some sort of authority with county. We would have to update for all those costs, because we would ask them to cashier on all those things. Along the way, what we found with the county is that they've eliminated any option of moving either the Sheriff's Office or the State's Attorney's Office to the county office building. And so that was one of the hopes, that we would find a win-win. I can't report, that is not in their mindset. Their mindset is to look at the former jail facility, which I think now houses juvenile detention. That juvenile detention, there's probably a better word, I don't have it in my lexicon right now, but they're going, that's going to move to the correctional center. And so the thought was that we could look at that site, either renovating that facility or, you know, demolishing and building new. And at the very least, they put the Sheriff's Office in there, and if they had an ability, they could also create office space for the state's attorneys. That's the option that they're looking at at this point in time. I think their initial option is a $9 million build on that particular build, and they have about 1.7, 8 mils left. So if you finance something over 30 years and do some things that they do, that's what they can fund. I think the 9 million, if I remember correctly, that kind of gets the Sheriff's Office in there. I think they need 15 million to actually expand it into the state's attorney's office. They looked at, even though they said no, I think the architect came up, what would be cost to retrofit some of that existing office space? I think that cost was about $3 million. So, all told, even though I think there were concerns regarding placing the Sheriff's Office in the building, is that there'd be concerns about a kind of a chilling effect of having clients go into the building with law enforcement. I think that was a major concern with the Sheriff's Office. I think with the state's attorney's office, they really insisted that they needed to be in the courthouse due to, you know, just how their work environment is. And number two, with safety. They felt more secure and safe in the county courthouse versus the county building. Because the county really wants the Public Health Department to stay in the county office building, and I think what they've offered to the city of Grand Forks is they would provide free rent moving forward if we were to keep Public Health in that particular building. The other thing they liked, and I think it would work, it would have worked just fine at Franklin-on-Fourth, but there's lots of agencies that are in the county office building and surrounding, like Spectra, where Public Health is really a great collaborative partner to move that. Those are some of their concerns. That's kind of the lay of the land right now, is we did it for multiple reasons. I don't think all the reasons that we were going to give, I think, have come together. I think the developer kind of deserves an answer if we're going to move forward or not. The other thing that I've heard from viewing county commission meetings is that they're not in agreement that they would pay additional costs to, as part of their agreement with the city. If we were to move them to Franklin-on-Fourth, they feel like they're giving the city a benefit about keeping them in the county office building. So if we don't accept that offer, they're not necessarily going to accept paying additional costs as part of the Franklin-on-Fourth development. The other thing we've done in parallel with this, our inspections department led a process, an RFQ process, to look at space utilization. The other part is, we've been speaking to the county and the Sheriff's Office about moving out of the second floor for the last, you know, around six years. And so I think what, through this discussion, one of the positives is that they've expedited their review of trying to find an alternative location. As I noted, either the former jail location or some sort of third-party office space is what they're looking at right now. And so at least they're working on a plan to move out of the second floor. So what we discussed with you is that we'd move forward with hiring an architect to do our own space utilization for both the first floor and the second floor, and how could we, in the next 20 to 30-year plan, expand the police department in that building, public safety answering point, and also perhaps the fire department in the Fire Marshal's Office. So we have moved forward with that process. The team, the administrative team, made up of police, fire, PSAP inspections, they did move forward and select EAPC as a consultant. The agreement is in the order of $40-some thousand, that's within our administrative authority. So we do plan to move forward with that and look at best ways that we can do it. And that's all part of, kind of like we did in City Hall here, kind of come forward with a 30-year plan, using existing resources, existing buildings that we can move forward without having to raise taxes or anything like that. So we have moved forward with that. So with that, we're here to answer any questions. That's the lay of the land, and if you want any further information, we're here for any questions.
Comments or questions for Mr. Fieland? Yes, Ms. Osowski?
I guess that my only comment is, is, you know, if the county's willing to relocate the Sheriff's Department out of our police department, and they're willing to allow Public Health to stay there for free, I see no reason why we should even be talking about the move anymore, I guess, especially with them saying that we can stay there. And they're not even in agreeance that they're going to help pay. So I motion that we kill this and we say no.
Is there a killer second? Second by Lunskey? Further, is there further comments? Yes, Ms. Veen?
Mr. Fieland, one of the questions I had, or I actually had somebody call me today and leave a message for me about utilization of the former fire hall that's on 17th Avenue. And if we're short of space, especially for the fire and the inspectors, is that an option for us to use that? I know I drive by there. Is there any potential?
It's, I'll have Chief, I can hear him coming, so. The city of Grand Forks, I don't know, maybe when we built the new station, the city agreed to put, allow police department and some of their special units to use that facility. And so, Chief, tell us what's all, what kind of stuff you got in there?
No problem. That's a great question, Mr. Veen. And I'll be honest with you right now, that building is actually capped out for space as well. That's where all of our SWAT vehicles and SWAT equipment, our K-9 equipment, our crisis negotiations team equipment, our riot and crowd control equipment. Between the garage spaces that we have there and the minimal office space that's available in there, it's not a viable option. I don't think you could shoehorn a couple people in there, because that space is utilized. And again, when you look at being a regional response team and special operations groups, with that comes equipment. And without that space, I don't know where else we would be able to store that equipment. So, long answer to your short question is, it's not a viable option to relocate. Anybody, or we would have already tried to utilize that past what we have.
Thank you. Mr. Fieland? On the current building that the police department was, is in, that was intended to be doubled in size. There was, that was the first phase of a, two-phase, if I remember right? When EAPC does look at that, can they look at that as an option, if, what could be expanded on-site versus going to a new location, too?
Sure. I'll follow up with the team to have them take a look at that. And, you know, we did expand the PSAP. We probably under-engineered it, but it was as good as it could get back in those days. And so it was, it was better than what they had, but it probably hasn't lasted 20 years. And so going back in time, if we could do it better, it probably would have. But we do answer to city councils.
Further, Mr. Fieland? What percentage of, maybe you don't know the exact, approximately what percentage of Grand Forks County is the city of Grand Forks?
I think we're about, city of Grand Forks is about 75%.
75%. So, just doing rough math in my head, the county's talking about bonding close to $10 million for a facility for the Sheriff's Department. And that might not even actually cover the cost of what they want to do. That's just all the money that they have to spend, and they're fully prepared to spend every nickel that they possibly can. Rough math, if you look at $2 million, well, $1.6 million fit-up, 33%, so about 500, 550 plus 33% of 200 grand a year, 66,000, multiply that times 20 years, your total nut is under $2 million for 20 years. So we've provided an avenue, an opportunity for the county. I actually want to talk about this. I'd love to move this forward and force the county's hand, because the, we taxpayers in the city of Grand Forks are going to have to come up with 75% of $10 million that they don't need to spend. It's completely unnecessary. As a matter of fact, it's an egregious misuse of funds by our county commissioners. I have no idea what they're thinking. I don't know what county administration has done to make it so nobody wants to be in their building. But I, for one, will remember this in November when I'm voting for my county commissioners. It's embarrassing. Any other comments? All those in favor of killing it, signify by saying aye. Aye? Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Moving right along, item 3.4, Grand Forks International Airport Air Service Expansion Update and USDOT Small Community Air Service Development Program Grant Subtle. Mr. Fieland?
Council President Sandy, I'm joined also, we have representatives from the MEHAN group, Sonia Murray is here, along with Zoe Lindemann, and also, I think I got those names right. Also Keith Lund from the Grand Forks EDC, and then also Ryan Resinger from the airport. So Authority, and Barry Wilford is down here from the chamber. But I just want to note, we're going to go through some, I think, positive things that we're moving forward with. But I think one of the real positives is this project has really brought all the entities together, the stakeholders, the chamber, the EDC, the airport authority, all under this mission. And, you know, you approved this in about three months ago, April 16th, to move forward with this, and we've made a lot of progress, and we've had some updates. But, you know, we really have engaged the public and private stakeholders really well about what their needs are. We've engaged the airline industry and with all the hopes of moving forward with this federal grant that's right in front of us, that we want, we're asking you tonight to submit on our behalf. So we've made a lot of progress in just a few months, and it's really been a great team effort, and I'm proud of everybody that we've worked with on it. I'm going to ask Ms. Murray to come up here and give you an update on this particular grant, but I just want to go over the motion that's in front of you. We're going to ask for $1 million of this federal grant for the Small Community Air Service Grant. We need a match. And, you know, a lot of these grants, the federal government's saying, well, you don't have to match at all, or very little, but you don't stand much of a chance. So we're trying to get at least 40% of a grant, of local grants, so that we can really show the interest. And I think we've done all the right things in our grant application that the MEHAN group, Aviation Group's going to put together, and that will really make us competitive. So in front of you, what we're asking for is $300,000 from the city's Economic Development Fund, which is 2163. The goal is, we won't have to use all 300,000 of that, but we just set that 300,000 aside. Keith and Barry from both the EDC and Chamber are looking, their goal of raising funds is 200,000. And so theoretically, we wouldn't need the 300,000. We'd use up to the 200,000. We'd have the $200,000 from the, we'll call it the business community, and also public sector institutions. And so we'd have $400,000 in cash to move forward. But I think the last I heard from Keith, they were in and around 70,000 raised currently from the two organizations, and that's only after a week or so. So we're making some good progress, but that's why I'm asking for the 300,000. If we run short on the cash that we would If we, if we run short on the cash that we would, we'd be able to use this. And remember, this is a reimbursable. We're just reimbursing, you know, the flight, the cost of this. And so it's not like we're handing, in this case, United Airlines 300,000 for them to go do something. The other thing, in working with Ryan Resinger, who's been a real great partner, along with the airport authority, you can do, they cannot provide cash funds to this, but they can do in-kind or indirect. So what their commitment as part of the grant is that they would provide up to $400,000 in in-kind support, 300,000 of waiving fees and rent at the airport, and then 100,000 in marketing support. So that would make up their $400,000 of in-kind support, which is a really big deal. And they also, JFK or the airport authority, they have to submit this grant to the USDOT. And so we're really a partner in this, but ultimately, the airport authority has to move forward with that. Before I ask Sonia to come up here, we're also working on an ask from Delta Airlines. So certainly what you're going to hear is, you're going to hear about a flight of United to Denver. We're also working with Delta to add a fourth flight. So through the MEHAN's groups, engagement with the airline industry, we have found that Delta is looking to for expansions in August, September. And so we are working on an ask that we would be able to add that fourth flight. That's kind of that dead period for Grand Forks. So in addition to what Sonia is going to talk about, we are going to move forward with requests there. So hopefully we can gain back that fourth flight from Delta and we'll see if we're successful in that regard. So lots of positive things going our way and hopefully we can be successful. And with that, I'd ask Sonia and Zoe to come on up.
Good evening. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you so much, City Council Mayor. It's great to see you guys. This is our third trip in, I think, two months. And we've been working fast and furious on your behalf, along with the EDC, the Chamber, the airport. What I want to brief you on very quickly is just a high level summary of the Small Community Air Service Development Grant, what we're going after. It is a task that's part of a larger effort, being led by the mayor, to step up the aggressive efforts for air service expansion and to really put into sort of a visible high level in front of the public, you know, how important air service is to our community and getting more of it. So let's talk about the Small Community Air Service Development Grant. It's been around for over 20 years. It started in 2001, but wasn't funded until '02 because of, unfortunately, 9/11. Every year, it's funded somewhere between almost 15 million and at its peak, it was almost 20 million. The airport has actually been a recipient of this grant twice. The first time in 2006, it received $350,000. It was initially trying to get United to Denver service and ultimately it couldn't get that, but secured Allegiant, right? So, and that has been sustained and it has been developed and we have non-stop service to Vegas, we have non-stop service to Phoenix Mesa. Now, make note, it was 2009, 2010 before that happened. This air service development takes some time, you know, from the time you might get the grant to the time that you get the service. The local dollar support at that point was 136,000 and there was about 27,000 for in-kind support. The second time that we were awarded a grant, or Grand Forks was awarded a grant, was in 2011. $300,000 to help launch United. SkyWest was the operating carrier to Denver. It's a, it's a big hub for United. It's not their biggest, but it's one of their biggest. Ultimately, the flights weren't really supported, and I can go into detail on that part of it, but there was 14 months of service and it didn't last. The local contribution was $300,000, a little bit more than 300,000 in cash and 137, 131,000 of in-kind support. I want to make note of one thing. In the Small Community Air Service Development Grant, there are many communities every year that get awarded. Some of them, the service lasts, some of them, the service doesn't get started, some of them, the service gets started and it doesn't last. And, you know, on the one hand, in '06, we were quite successful and on, in 2011, we weren't. But we keep going, right? So what's really important is that the in-kind and the cash contributions are critical. The DOT likes to see what you call skin in the game, right? So, but I want to emphasize that it's really a pledge. There's really no commitment right now because two things have to happen. One, we have to get pledges and add that into our formal proposal that goes on the docket. Then we have to get the award and then we have to get a carrier to agree to come in. And at that point, we will turn around to anyone that pledges and say, all right, it's time that we need the money or the in-kind effort. So when the DOT gets these proposals every year, sort of what are some of the top factors that they're looking for that sort of put you in the pile of, yes, let's consider this much more carefully and no, absolutely, you're not going to get an award this year? So a carrier support letter, which we have secured, and so we will talk about in more detail, a very strong active public-private partnership. The DOT likes to see that we have a group of people in the community, both on the public sector and the private side, that are very much in support of and consider air service a priority. We have that in spades. It's a very impressive group. We'll talk about that in a minute. Applications that have a solid business case, that really have realistic targets and market targets, carrier targets, that demonstrate that there's a likelihood that this will succeed if we get the money, that we can demonstrate that improved service will have a material benefit to the broadest part of the traveling public. That's really important to the DOT because there's a lot of lawyers there. And there is no question, if we got non-stop service to any hub in the U.S., Chicago, Denver, Dallas, it would have a material impact on this community, given the limited air service we have now. So we can demonstrate that in spades, that there's a preference to markets that are experiencing higher than average airfares. You can't have a more shining example of high airfares than Grand Forks. We know because every time we come in here, it's at least a grand, probably more like $1,400. And that's with a week, two weeks of purchasing, you know, ahead of time. And that finally, we can demonstrate and show that we have a strong implementation plan that's going to try to very quickly use the money. The DOT does not want the money back, but they also want to see that there's timely use of funds. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Zoe to talk about the details.
Okay, thank you, Sonia. So these next two slides are going to kind of review last year's grant recipients, who was awarded grants and how much of the local pledges they came up with. So in 2023, 48 communities applied for an air service development grant, 20 were awarded. So about 42% of the communities that applied were awarded a grant. In total, the 48 communities asked for $34 million. The 20 communities that were awarded received about 15 million. Now, we know this year, the DOT has about $12 million in grants that they can award, which is less than last year. We think next year will be more, but we have 12 million to work with this year. So this slide is looking at the local community pledge. And Sonia's already explained how important having the local community make financial pledges are to Grand Forks' application. On average, of the communities that were awarded, they pledged about 40%. So if we're asking for a million dollar grant, 400,000 would be about the average that we should be pledging. That, obviously, that, you know, the total dollar amount, the absolute dollar amount ranges by community because communities ask for different amounts of money. So last year, they raised on average about 300,000 because the average grant ask was So how are we setting Grand Forks' application up for success? As Sonia mentioned, we've received a support letter. So the biggest hurdle to this whole application process, we have overcome, and that's getting a carrier, an airline to say, we support this application when we submit it to the DOT. We have SkyWest Airlines, which is a code share, longtime code share partner with United Airlines. They are the regional carrier that operates for them, their regional fleet. They have written us a letter. So what's our goal for the grant? It's to attract a major airline to a carrier hub. Denver, United is our top choice. Also, United, Chicago, maybe American Chicago, but United is our top choice at this point to Denver. We are requesting $1 million in federal funds. And our goal right now is to have pledges that are backed of about 400 to 500,000 and then in-kind support from the local community as well. We are submitting the application on July 22nd. So in the two short weeks, we're submitting an application. And one of the biggest, the biggest things that's important to them is to have an impressive public-private coalition to show buy-in from the community. And we have a very impressive coalition, public-private coalition, that's made up of 16 community members, businesses and organizations, including, you know, Grand Forks EDC, the Chamber, University of North Dakota, University of Minnesota in Crookston, also Northrop Grumman, General Atomix, All True Health, Grand Sky. So we have a lot of local buy-in to this application.
And I just want to add, all of that took about one month to get everybody to say, I mean, it was so incredibly easy because this topic of air service is so important to these organizations.
Yes. The business community is in need of more air service. The local community is in need of more air service. So how did we come up with United to Denver as being the top priority? Well, one, it is probably one of Grand Forks' most largest not unserved markets. Two, because of, you have Delta service to Minneapolis, United Denver would offer complementary connections. It's a large local market, but it would also offer complementary connections to the West, just opening up more access to the nation and even international. Also, we conducted a business air travel survey in April and May. We had over 150 companies respond to that survey in just about a month. And United in Denver was the top priority for those businesses. So here's where we are with application. It's due in two weeks. We have the biggest thing done, we secured a carrier support letter from SkyWest. We are now in the process of raising local pledges, which, as Sonia mentioned, do not, do not come due until, one, Grand Forks has won the grant, and then, two, we've secured service from a major carrier, hopefully United to Denver. The other thing that we have in progress is we're getting support letters from the local businesses and key constituents to show that they support the grant. We are also hoping for the city council approval for the direct dollar contribution. And then we have our business plan in action that will show why we need the funds from the federal government and how we will use them. And now I'll hand it back to Sonia.
And this is the last slide. So here's just a quick timeline of what's happening in this month and for the next couple of months. It's a little hard to read, but just kind of bear with me. So between now and July 22nd, all we are doing is living and breathing the application, right? Getting it all ready. And we, we are not, we have gotten tremendous support from the EDC, from the airport, from the Chamber. This couldn't have been made possible without their help, how they've engaged the businesses, how the businesses have listened to them, paid attention and responded, which has been great. It's made our job a lot easier. We're also collecting support letters, just one-pagers. We support the application for the Small Community Grant for Grand Forks. And we are finalizing and submitting an application on the 22nd. In September, and that date is to be determined, but we're going to host our first air service task force, business task force. We're going to talk about the action plan, what we've been doing, what we're going to continue to do to try to secure non-stop service. We're also going to attend a couple more industry, airline, airport conferences that only focus on air service and new route opportunities. There's one in October. And then finally, hopefully by the end of the year, the, for sure, by the end of the year, the DOT will have made their decision, if not sooner, maybe the fall, and we will know. And whether we get the grant or not, we continue forward with our efforts. This always was a grant that added more resources to our toolbox, which is always helpful when we're doing this type of activity. And if we don't get it, then we will have a recap with the DOT on, you know, where we needed to improve our application and we'll apply next year. Thank you very much for your time. And if you have any questions, we'd love to answer them.
Mr. Reigel, question?
Quick question. On page four of your presentation, it said 42% of the grants rewarded, 58% declined. Of that 42%, how many did you guys work on?
This round, none.
Okay.
Personally, I've worked on three that were successful prior to this round.
Okay. So in 2023, you guys didn't work on any?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Wonsky?
So you said you were going to also send Delta a letter asking to add?
Yes.
I think pre-pandemic, Delta had five flights.
That's right.
Can we ask them for seven? Maybe we'll get five?
We can. I don't know that we'll get them. But, and I just wanted to add to what Todd was saying. This is really to restart a flight that got taken away, right? And there's, there are actually a few more and you start one at a time. We had a meeting with Delta very recently and there was, there's a tactical opportunity that's coming up right now in August. They're going to be making a decision on putting more regional airplanes out to some routes that they weren't anticipating. And we had a long discussion. We talked about all of the business activity that's happening here, particularly on the defense side, which they weren't aware of. Because let's be honest, and Mike, you can back me up on this, they don't want to be known. They don't want people to know what they're doing. They don't want, you know, they're happy to have somebody sort of, just at a high level, say, there's a lot of growth and there's a lot of air travel that's coming. But, so there's not an awareness, and it's a great, it's a great narrative to talk to the carriers about, but they're just not aware because they're civilians, right? But, so, and, and the wonderful part about this finding, as we've been talking to the business community, is that this is short-term growth and midterm growth. And so there's just going to be more requirements for air travel. So we're kind of in a good position to be sort of doing all of this stuff right now. But at any rate, Delta said, well, you sound like, at this point, and we've been talking for a while about getting another flight back, but based on that information of the travel survey and what we've been talking to them about, they said, you know, we think you're in a good position to possibly get some extra flying starting in September, which is pretty unheard of, like that they'll make a decision in August and that they'll start. But again, it's a tactical opportunity. And we asked them, well, how do we get, you know, up at the top of that list? And they said, honestly, it's just about staying engaged with us and letting us know things like this. So we, what we want to do is, it's really a letter campaign and it's going right to the CEO, Ed Bastian, who, according to his staff, read every single letter from a community. And so what we're going to do is have a letter that starts with the mayor asking for the fourth flight and then all these companies. And so once we get the fourth flight back and we can prove that, yes, we need even more, then we continue to have this dialogue. Maybe we start to change up the aircraft to larger planes, et cetera, et cetera. But it's sort of one of those. It's a process. This is a process and it never ends.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Friedos?
One comment and one question. So it's been a pleasure working with you guys over the last few months on this. You've been awesome. I've learned a lot about flights and numbers and, you know, how we're having our lunch eaten by Fargo. And so, second, when I talk to folks, they're like, absolutely, this is a great idea, but does it drive down the cost? And so I don't know, you know, you can't say, yes, it does, you know, it drives it down exponentially, right? But for the majority, that's what I find what kind of drives people to, you go other, use other local airports. And so I think if, along with this, that we drive down the cost, I think this is just, this is so great for the community. So.
Yeah, so I think, obviously, it's not going to, it's not an ultra-low-cost carrier that we're trying to get in, but any competition that you have at the airport should drive down the cost of what you're paying right now. So I would say it should. I would think so, yes.
Yeah, so let me, I just add, this, this industry just moves completely on the fundamentals of economics, any economic theory, right? So when you get more competition in, you are going to get, you know, you make a choice. Okay, now I have, now I can go over Denver on United versus Minneapolis on, on Delta. But also, having an ultra-low-cost carrier like you do is a big deal. And it, and it has helped, now it has helped in certain markets, right? Not all. And one of the other pieces to this whole puzzle is we are also going to continue to expand service with our incumbent carriers like Allegiant and try to get, attract other ultra-low-cost carriers as well. But definitely getting United in here will help. But definitely getting United in here will help, and we can show you, we can show you some numbers over time, what's happened in the Fargo market with the, with the overall average fares and how they've come down. But, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Ms. Fried?
Yes, sir. Just a couple of questions. The million dollars, what is that used for? Why was it a million? And we will have a, what, 300 or 500,000 more? Can you explain that?
Sure. So the $1 million will be used as a revenue guarantee for when, you know, we get United to come and serve Denver. It just kind of takes the risk out of it for the airline when they come into a new market. It's the riskiest thing that an airline can do. And this is just providing a great financial resource for them and just helps offset the risk.
It's a financial guarantee.
You know, so here's the thing about a revenue guarantee. If this hits on day one, if we get enough people at the right price, we don't even have to pay out anything, right? So in theory. But it's really just that, as Zoe said, that startup phase, that first year, maybe it's three months, maybe it's six months, maybe we don't even use the million dollars on the revenue guarantee. Maybe we use half of that. So the other part of our plan is to take, take the rest of the money and use it for marketing and promoting of the flight. Because unfortunately, the major airlines consider that when they, when you can book on their website, that's their advertising. So that's about what they do, just in all honesty. So it's really going to be up to the community to be aggressive about how they advertise, promote, and increase awareness of these flights to different populations. The student population is sort of, you know, I'm not trying to stereotype, but they're much, they move much more digitally, right? So maybe we do things like that. But then there's other segments of the population, like the business, where, you know, we have the, the community leaders that are, that are making sure that that is a known new service. But it's really going to be up to us, so that's why our plan is sort of loose and tight at the same time. There's a revenue guarantee component that may or may not be used, depending on how successful the flight is. And then there's a marketing and promotional component to it.
Mr. Weigl?
Mr. Sandy, I'll move approval of staff recommendation.
There's a motion approval? Second by Osowski. Further comment?
Yeah, with a comment. I have a question, though, for Mr. Gostad on this. I guess I'm just kind of wondering, you know, we have a member of our committee that is sitting on this board, and also, I believe, the EDC and the Chamber of Commerce, representing the company that this person works for. And so, like, is, is there a conflict of interest by representing a company on these committees and then kind of helping push them forward towards counsel and then being able to vote on them also?
Well, unless the, the way the conflict of interest rules work, unless the person that you're describing has some financial interest and, and his vote will make a difference to him or her financially, meaning a positive vote would create some sort of pecuniary interest, some sort of, for example, a wage increase, or a vote against would also create some sort of financial advantage to that person. That's where the conflict of interest arises. If the person feels that they have that conflict of interest, they disclose it. And I think we've gone through this exercise a number of times, and the, and the rest of the city council could then vote to allow the person to vote on the, on the proposal.
Thank you.
I have a comment. Although I agree with Mr. Friedhaus, people are very price-sensitive when it comes to air travel, but it's typically more leisure travelers than business travelers. Business travelers are more interested in getting the benefits that they get for being part of a membership of that team. I see on, on slide nine, that we have completed the, developing the draft airline incentive program. Is that the incentive we're going to ask United, for example, to provide to the local business travelers who might not be part of the United program?
No, sir. That is, the airport is, for a two-year period, which is the maximum they can do under FAA regulation, going to waive landing fees and terminal rent and maybe some boarding bridge fees, and then offer sort of a cooperative marketing fund of $100,000. So it's the total cost, basically the opportunity cost of getting money, but to help them in that risky startup period, because it's a lot of money to start a new station.
Sure. What are we going to do to try to get United to provide some sort of an incentive for the business travelers in our community?
Yeah, so I think what you mean is, so, you know, frequent business travelers start to join a frequent flyer program, and then they have perks, is that what you mean? And they have status? And so each, so it's...
So I'll ask that, because in 2011, we didn't ask United to do any, any of the sort, and in which case their flights were in and out of Grand Forks mostly empty, and all the Delta flights continued to be full, or Northwest Airlines at the time.
You know, there's a confluence of factors as to why it didn't work out, and we can talk about that. I'm happy to talk about that now, or we can talk about it offline. But at the time, they didn't have these matching programs. But what I was going to say is, so it's, it's such a competitive industry. The majors, the three majors, right? United, American, and Delta. They all now have matching programs. So say you're Diamond on Delta, and you can walk over to United and say, okay, if you match my status, I'll start flying for you. Now you have to be committed to going through Denver, right? Say if they start up. And they will say, yes, sure, let's do that. And so for the first year, they'll look at, you're flying every quarter to see if you still have, you know, are earning that status. But that will immediately put you into that, you know, top tier, so you have all those same benefits. And, and so each one of them are doing that to try to get...
They already do it.
Pardon me?
They already do that?
Yes, they do.
Great.
But that'll be a big part of the messaging, too, right? You know?
Certainly. Yes, Ms. Lonsky?
But I think that's changed a little bit. Like, so you buy the very expensive credit card, so you can have access to the club lounge at certain airports. Is there a matching program? Like, United wouldn't match your Delta benefits that way, would they?
No, so they, they, all of the airlines have come up with, you know, besides getting revenue from passenger flying, they're trying to find other ways to get revenue in general. And so the credit cards have certainly been one way to do it. But at some point, the people that have the credit cards, it's really difficult to achieve that super-high level, even the second-tier level, unless you're flying as well. But they will, they'll definitely give you credit for using one of their co-branded cards.
Thank you. Further comment? There's a motion and second on the floor. Any other comment? Hey, none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Last but not least, 3.5 growth indicators, salary plan 2025 budget kickoff. Ms. Dorsted, good evening.
Thank you, President Sandy, members of the committee. I'm actually going to defer to the mayor first. He's going to make some opening remarks, and then when he's ready, he'll turn it back over to, to myself.
Thank you, Ms. Dorsted. Chairman Sandy, Vice President Weigl, council members, thank you. We're going to have a full budget review on July 22nd, so really what you're seeing now is general fund preview and the proposed salary plan. Preliminary approval will be August 5th. I think they're going to have some slides in there, too, so we've got about a month to chew on this. As we know, once we have preliminary approval, we can't add anything to the budget, but we can take away. As we look at this, just as in the past, the budgetary focus was on public safety, infrastructure, and people. This proposed budget also includes a slight mill decrease, which would be the fifth consecutive mill, mill decrease if it's approved as proposed. Obviously, if there's additional budget cuts, it would also help with that reduction. The budgeting process, although it never really stops, the formation of the 2025 budget began several months ago in March, so I want to thank all the departments, along with finance and HR, for the work they've done to this point. A couple of points, a couple items that I'd like to point out, just keep in mind the general fund, 80, nearly 80% of general fund expenditures are salary and benefits, so that's going directly to people. If you compare the general fund budget in 2025 versus 2024, you're going to see probably one of the glaring issues that we really need to take a look at, wages, the overall wage expense is up 1.179 million, and actually, benefits are outpacing that. Benefits are up 1.42 million, and a big piece of that's healthcare. Healthcare looking at a 15% increase. We really need to take a hard look at that in the future, knowing that all the employees of the city, you know, if there's a 15% increase, their cost shares are going up 15% too. So if you get a wage increase and you have a large increase in your healthcare costs, your, your raise isn't really as much as it may seem on paper. I wanted to highlight, there is no new positions added for 2025. We're doing more with what we've got. I think that's very positive. We've included 2.5% for the steps, and 3/4 of the ECI employer cost index is included in the budget that you're going to see, which is about a 5.725% increase on wages across the board. You know, we're talking a lot about expenses, but as we look at growing revenues and doing so with sustainable sources, industrial growth is still the best way to do it. You have these large facilities that bring a large amount of property tax revenue, and you really only have one site that you have to serve, so the cost is lower for, for the city in general. Another source that can definitely benefit us is franchise fees. So one, another item that we're proposing in this is an increase in franchise fees for the super-high-volume users. The current rate in our franchise fees for electrical users is 2%, up to 20 megawatts, and after that, it's 0.75% for 20 megawatts and above. There's only one user that's above 20 megawatts, that'd be Core Scientific, so we're taking that amount that's, starts at above 20 megawatts, which is 0.75, and we're raising that to the same rate, so it'd be flat at 2%. This would increase that one company paying roughly 300,000 extra dollars per year. As we've talked about data centers and how do they help benefit the community, you've got one company, I don't have the exact numbers, but it's probably benefiting our top line by about half a million dollars a year, which is pretty significant. So that's a reliable source that will be there along into the future, knowing the investments that they've made, and very, very positive going into the future, knowing that Fargo's at 4%, so us still being at 2%, you know, or half the rate of Fargo for not only regular users, like you or I, but also industrial users. So that's a highlight on the revenue side, and just a few points. I'm sure staff will do a much better job than I do going through this. So Ms. Dorsted, please, take it from there.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Boy, he hit it all pretty good. I'm going to just go through, first of all, the agenda, what we plan to go through. We'll let you know where we're at with the budget process at this time, and give you a snapshot look at how the numbers are coming in so far in 2024. Look at some of those key indicators out to 2025, and then I'll turn it over to Ms. Bouvet. She'll go through the salary plan information. And then finally, I'll just wrap it up, looking at what's ahead and some key dates coming up. But basically, this is just a nice visual for you. It'll show you where we're at with this process. We've been working administratively with the mayor and departments. We've been looking at, you know, how are those numbers coming in, some historical data? How are they coming in year-to-date? What are the current needs? What are the projected needs? And talking to all the departments, well, how are those budget requests coming in? And ultimately, forming some draft numbers that you see here tonight, ultimately looking for presentation of the budget in its entirety on July 22nd. But tonight, of course, we're in July, and this is the first time we're having any formal presentation with the 25 budget. What you have included also as a handout is handout A. That's going to show you a little more detail than what I have on this slide, but this just gives you a look, after the first quarter of 2024, how the numbers are sitting for the general fund. The handout also gives you just a brief summary on those utility funds. But basically, overall, our revenues, one quarter in, we're at 52% of budget with expenses at 24% of budget. So things are tracking very well on the expense side, tracking very well on the revenue side. Real estate tax, that's 90% of the budget. That's just really because of the timing of how those funds come in. So happy with how the years started out there. So I want to just show some of the key revenue drivers that are important to the city. This shows you just the first five months that are booked so far on our financials for state aid and highway users, and how it compares to the first five-month period the two years prior. But I want to spend a little, little time on this, particularly for new council people, just the source of these funds. So when we say state aid and this coming into the general fund, what that is, is the state has a sales tax, 5% sales tax, and a portion of that sales tax gets distributed to counties and cities. So that's, when we refer to state aid going to the general fund, that's the source of those funds. Highway user tax is the gas tax, so you pay a gas tax at the pump per, per gallon to the state, and then there's a portion, part of the distribution of that is a portion for cities. And then that gets distributed out to cities and counties based on both the size of the city within the county and then the population of that city. Anyway, that graphic will just give you a brief synopsis of how we're looking at compared to the first five months of the last two years. And then sales tax, you get these monthly reports, and if you're not on that distribution list and want to get on that list to get our monthly sales tax reports, let me know and we'll get you on there. But we're up currently on a 12-month period 5.57%, so tracking well there as well. But I wanted us to get into the 2025 budget preliminary and what's included. Like I said, this is in draft form, and we're fine-tuning numbers, and we'll bring that forward to you on July 22nd. But city sales tax is a major revenue driver. It goes, it affects many funds within the city. You can see how those funds get deviated out in the 25 budget here on this slide. But what we have included at this point is a 3% over 2023 actual. As I said, so far in the 12-month period, we're up 5.57%, so we feel that's conservative. In a nutshell, we have a 1% general sales tax. That's split between economic development, general fund, which is your property tax relief, and the street infrastructure fund. Then we have a half-cent street water sales tax that goes 60% streets, 40% water. And then we also have that 3/4% of their center sales tax that we also expanded now also for the new facility that we're talking about building here. State aid, just a look at that. We look at the previous two-years actuals, the 2024 budget and the 2025 budget on these slides. We do have a 3% over 2023 actual budgeted for state aid. I wanted to provide, I believe I did this last year, too, but we have a couple new council members, so just a little history here on collections on this revenue source. When I look back, we peaked in collections on state aid in 2014. That had been a revenue source to the general fund of about $4.9 million. We did see that revenue decline the coming years, and, and then since, for about 2015, 16, 17, we saw a decline, came back up, and ultimately, we have a budget in 2025 of about $4.8 million. So just to put it, you know, in relative terms, we're, we're just about up to where we had been enjoying revenue from this revenue source in, in 2014. And on that line, it just shows you the volatility of that, and that's really the importance of our contingencies and healthy reserves. So if we were to see a decline or trending the wrong way, those factors just give us time to look at things and readjust. Highway user tax and the gas tax, we do have a decrease budgeted from the 2023 actuals of 1.9%. We're going off of the state's projection on that. Same story as state aid. We peaked on this revenue source in 2014. It's been, it went down and went back up again, went down and a little back up, but overall, we're about $850,000 annually less from this revenue stream that affects our street infrastructure fund. What has helped is a legacy fund distribution. We received $890,000 in, in 2023. We expect to receive that allocation in 2025, but that is a per biennium number. So, but it definitely helps offset that loss in gas tax. And then Prairie Dog is actually the municipal infrastructure fund, also referred to as Prairie Dog, that comes from the state's oil and gas tax. We do have a allocation that's figured as part of that formula. We expect to receive 12 million each biennium, and we have it plugged into the budget for 10 million each biennium for street infrastructure, 2 million each biennium for wastewater. And this just shows you a snapshot of how those buckets are filling. How it works is you fill up the bucket, then they distribute for that purpose. So the buckets of interest to the city here are, there's two asterisks, one and two numbered there. Once we get that $60.5 million bucket filled, our allocation from that shares 2.5 million. And then once that next bucket fills... And then once that next bucket fills, our estimated share is about 9.5 million. So that's how we come to the total of 12 million per biennium.
Sorry, Ms. Dorsted.
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Are we predicting that those buckets are going to fill?
Yes, and I should, thank you, President Sandy. So at this time, the buckets are filling very well. We do expect that those buckets will fill and we should receive our full allocation in 2025. I would estimate the first round around the March timeframe and then once the next one. So, but we're 12 months in of a 24-month period and it's coming in well. And then as the mayor stated, we've been looking at that franchise fee. We've been talking about, you know, we do have increased expenses, particularly in public safety with the reporting management system, CAD systems, funding the salary plan, as well as other expenses, technology that increases every year. We're really looking to another sustainable source of revenue to help with those increased expenses and take some burden off of the property tax. So this came up, it's up for a recommendation to look at just having the same flat 2%. We believe we'd still be competitive with the city of Fargo if we do this and it doesn't impact residents. And this is just a snapshot of how those franchise fees come in. Cable had seen some declines. It seems to have stabilized a bit. We have 1.45 million in there for our Excel franchise and nodak. That's where you see where that customer is. That's the high volume electric user and that's where that bump is coming from. And just a snapshot, you also have a handout on this, handout B, that breaks out everything that receives property tax under the city's umbrella will be on that handout. But this, just in a nutshell, we estimate the value of a mill to be roughly $294,000. We do have a slight mill decrease, as the mayor stated, of just 0.05 mills. But you can see more of the graphic mayor's effort really to try to reduce that mill levy and just showing from 2024 where we've, where we've, where we sit with total mills. Overall, then, the general fund expenses are estimated at roughly $53 million. We've included on here both a breakout by category and by function. And you also have a handout C that just gives you one page snapshot, how those expenses break out. But really, as stated, the new public safety reporting management systems, CAD systems, salary plan, all in, public safety makes up 55% of the general fund budget. And when you add in streets, engineering, health, that's 79%. And the general government portion is the 21%. But it is, general fund is people driven, so 78% is your wages and benefits. Now, when you see this on July 22nd and you look at overall all funds, the pie charts are going to look much different with how that breaks out by category. But with that, I am, I am here for questions, but for now, I am going to turn it over to Tangi to go through the salary plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Council President Sandy and members of the committee. The complete draft salary plan handout for 2025 can be found under bullet D on the website under this budget presentation. And you should also have a print copy that was distributed earlier this evening. So the handout contains a summary of the city's classification and compensation structure and system, as well as multiple tables and graphs to help illustrate the plan's design. The current, the city's current salary plan structure was put into place January of 2024. This plan is a step in grade system. The salary plan has 28 grades. Each grade is 5% apart, up to grade 20. And grades 20 through 28 are separated by 10%. This 10% helps to separate exempt and non-exempt level employees. Each grade has 18 steps and each step is two and a half percent apart. The midpoint of each grade is step I. These steps are utilized as annual performance increases and employees must have a satisfactory performance evaluation to achieve the 2.5% step increase. Each position in the city is assigned a grade that is based on a factor evaluation system, which is a structure that evaluates positions based on various core functions, such as knowledge required, complexity, and supervisory controls, just to name a few. Positions are also graded on our internal value system and external salary surveys. The salary plan is designed to be equitable and competitive. The city's current salary plan design utilizes the employer cost index, also known as the ECI, to adjust for market increases. The ECI is an economic indicator that tracks the cost of labor to employers over time. The city's plan design recommends funding between 75 and 100% of the ECI annually to account, to remain competitive in the market and require less frequent compensation plan redesigns. The city uses the December ECI data, which came in at 4.3%. The mayor's proposed budget contains a market adjustment of 3.225%, which is 75% of the December ECI. As you can see at the chart insert on the screen, the ECI did peak in late 2022 and early 2023, and it appears to be trending downward. This chart depicts the last 10 years of funding for the city's salary plan. As you can see, last year's 8.58% is an outlier, as this was when our new salary plan was implemented. As part of the plan's implementation, equity adjustments were provided to current employees, which accounted for 4.47% of that 8.58% cost. The implementation of the equity adjustments for employees was to relieve compression issues caused by our old plan design. I anticipate that similarly to the ECI data slide, it's likely that our salary request will be trending downward as well. I'd also like to point out that on this slide, in 2021, a salary plan was not implemented. Instead, each employee received $1,000 added to their base pay, apart from eligible employees who chose to join the newly offered Andy Purr's Public Safety Plan. The cost breakout for the general fund to implement the proposed salary plan is $784,748 for the performance step increase, $1,018,452 for the market portion, which again is recommended at 75% of the ECI. The total general fund request with taxes and benefits equals just over $1.8 million. This graph illustrates the percentage breakout of the performance step increase and the market-based increase for the proposed plan for the general fund. The performance portion comes in at 44% of the plan cost, while the market-based ECI performance accounts for 56% of the plan cost. This graph mirrors those percentages across all funds for a total of just over $2.6 million. All funds include the general fund plus enterprise funds, special revenue funds, and internal service funds. In addition to funding the salary plan, the 2025 budget also has numerous promotions built into facilitate career growth and employee retention. There are promotional opportunities available in public works, IT, public health, police, and Department of Building Safety. This list does not include additional promotional opportunities that will occur due to retirements or attrition. Also included in the 2025 budget is a reclassification of the public health analyst position. This was previously funded 100% through health grants. And in 2025, moving forward, it will be funded by 60% general funding and then 40% will remain health grant funding. City administration and human resources are reviewing benefits on a continual basis to ensure that the city is maintaining a competitive benefits package so we can attract and retain talent. A large part of this evaluation process is comparing data to similar entities and listening to city employees and the employee rep group. And just for our new council members, the city has an employee rep group that is a committee that has representative employee from each department that serves to help facilitate the sharing of information between city administration and city employees. So together, we've been able to put together some adjustments to the city's vacation leave accrual schedule. That will create a more competitive system without additional cost. The changes to the schedule can result in employees earning more vacation time upfront and smoothing out the gain in accruals over time. Also during the benefit review, it was noted that the city is lagging in holidays offered compared to other public entities. And so we are proposing to add a additional floating holiday. The addition of the holiday will get us back on track to be more competitive with our peers and will not have the cost impact of adding a fixed holiday. And finally, the city is once again soliciting for our health insurance renewal. We should have the proposed rates and carrier options by January 18th and just in time to update the committee at the budget presentation on the 22nd. So with that, I'll step aside and allow Maureen to finish with the timeline.
Thank you. Thank you, Tangi. And just to clarify, it's July 18th, not January 18th.
Oh, yeah.
Other than that, thank you. Okay, so looking ahead, we do have another meeting here on Wednesday, July 10th. We have the joint meeting. You should have all received an invitation for a meeting for noon at the Alaris Center. For those that are available and want a tour, they do plan to run a tour of the facility and our team at 11 o'clock and then plan to serve a lunch at 11:45, so we can get that meeting started at noon. Then we will be here back again to present the mayor's budget on July 22nd, along with all funds and the fee listing, what's projected on utility rates in the CIP. And then what we plan to do is bring this forward for preliminary approval on August 5th. And from there, we set the public hearing for September 16th for final approval. In between that time, we'll communicate our preliminary budget information and public hearing, date, time, location to the county and they'll send out, we have to get that to the county by August 10th, so then they can get those estimated tax statements out to every household by August 31st. That shows the dates of all the public hearings of all the local taxing entities. The full timeline is handout E with your material. With that, I would open it up for questions.
Questions for either Ms. Dorsted or Ms. Bovette?
Ms. Ososki.
Yeah, I guess my only question is, is are we going to get binders again this year?
Yes, we will plan to get you when we have the full budget put together for the 22nd. You will have a binder.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Oh, can I comment on that?
Yes, Ms. Lonsky.
Can we pick if we want a printed binder or a digital binder?
By all means, yes. If we can save paper, I'm all for it.
Thank you.
Further comments? Mr. Veen, yes, sir?
Um, on the sales tax, what's the impact of online sales tax collection?
It's a good question, Councilman Veen, members of the committee. I don't get a breakout of that. I can just tell you, I think it does have a significant impact. We do, I just don't get that report from the state. Everything goes through the state and we don't get that reported to us. But if you'd like me to make a formal request for that information, I can try to get that for you.
I mean, it seems kind of a little bit interesting that it keeps going up and up and up and yet retail doesn't, in town stays maybe more stagnant or even?
You know, I'm not sure how to answer that. I do believe there's a lot of online shopping, so I do believe we benefit from the, from the sales tax on that. And I think there's a lot of, you know, businesses that when one closes, another one opens. So what the net effect of that is, I'm not sure. Some of it is just relocating to another area within the city that impacts those numbers. I can tell you that, you know, sales tax, you know, on a 12-month period, I think we're trending actually, you know, a little bit better than state aid right now. So I think that's good for our area.
Then one, one last question. With the potential vote on the property tax elimination, I'm thinking that'll have a significant impact on the numbers that you present?
That's a very good question. If that were to go through, yes, we'd be back in front of you. And just to, you know, I believe, you know, if something like that were to happen, we do have healthy reserves, we have contingencies. I believe it's something that, yes, we may amend for '25, but more so, it's going to be working through the '26 budget and beyond and how to adjust and how do we take the impact of that and between revenue and other revenue, or other revenue sources, looking at our expenses and, and how to work through that.
Yeah, I think it'd be interesting to know what that might be.
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Weigl?
Sir? Just want to say thank you to Tangi. I was firing off a couple of emails Thursday night, got answers back right away, and I think that's really good. They're attached here, some of the questions I had on the budget. When we look at medical insurance, you said that'll come back mid-July-ish. We're budgeting a 15% increase.
Correct.
It could come back 30% increase, for all we know. Because I think last year, we budgeted at one point and it was higher, I believe.
I believe.
Or was it real close, maybe?
It was real close, but yeah.
So it could come back significantly higher. The thing that I struggle with at times is we put our health insurance out for bid. We saved the city significant money. We saved our employees significant money by, by going to a new plan. Last year, we decided to stay with our plan, knowing it's going to cost us more, when I believe we would have been flat this year with, with the auto renewal. So it wouldn't have cost us anymore. And so I, I just think it's really important that our city employees realize that.
Because they didn't want us to put it out.
Correct. They didn't want us, we didn't want to switch. And so we're at 15% raises over the last two years, plus we're looking at additional insurance costs. And so I really want our employees to realize that we're doing a lot for city employees, but at the same time, there's got to be some give and take in some of these things. And so when we try to put a budget out here, or your, the mayor's budget, we're only looking at a half-mill decrease, while we've got families and citizens in Grand Forks, too, that may not be getting those same raises, those same increases. So I think it's something that we really have to balance when it comes to the budget and just kudos to Maureen and the mayor and everybody else, Todd, on a budget coming
Further comments? I'll reiterate what I said last year. I don't like longevity pay. I think people should earn their raises, not just get a raise because they're here in another year. I also have significant concerns about the performance review process that we do, because I know for a fact in history, in recent years, performance reviews weren't actually critically done. They were just given across the board to departments. And so I'm concerned that we should have a standardized, and I brought this up when we talked about going to the new plan, about having a better standardized performance review process. I don't know if we've implemented one, but I think that making sure that all employees are being evaluated equally is important. I'll assume that you're all trying to make that happen. I, I do know that the insurance has certainly been widely discussed over the last few years. Have we, have we looked into self-insuring?
Yes, we do actually. And that's a part of our health insurance renewal bid this, this current year as well, is to look at those self, the self-insured renewals as well as fully funded renewals. In the last couple of years that we have bid that out, it has been more to, to become fully funded. It's mostly going to be a timing thing. One year, it will be the right time to become fully funded.
Sure. I think if you look at the buckets that mayor, we saw in one of those previous slides, it's interesting to me that the Purr's bucket comes after funding lignite research. That's coal, everybody, not oil, that's coal. We're actually funding research for coal development prior than paying the pension plan for the state, state employees. I mean, it shows, in my opinion, it speaks volumes as to how our legislature looks at their budgeting process. Anyway, I don't- Anyway, I don't, I can't argue with what Mr. Weigle's saying. I don't believe, again, last year was an anomaly. You've already discussed that, Ms. Bovette. But close to 15% raises in two years, there isn't a single organization in town that has seen those sorts of raises, not UND, not the county, not the Park District. I'm not saying that our employees don't deserve, I'm not saying that they don't deserve it. I just think that we get wrapped around a salary plan rather than looking holistically at what's going on around us. I realize we have a plan for a reason. I just don't particularly like this plan. But that's not news to anybody. So any other comments or questions? Looking forward to the next budget discussion. Thank you both for all the hard work. And Mayor, doing a smash-up job. Okay, anything else for the good of the order? Council member discussion items? Ms. Osowski, anything for the good of the order?
No, thank you.
Ms. Berg?
No, thank you.
Ms. Lonsky? Mr. Friedos? Mr. Veen? Mr. Weigle?
No.
No, okay. I, I have a couple comments, questions. First of all, Mr. Gostad, we've been hearing from concerned citizens by email and at this council meeting last week. Have you learned anything regarding the concerns raised about foreign-owned land within our confines?
And I think what I've, what I've learned is that, it's my understanding that this email communication that was initiated by Jody Carlson was received in the general information email box that is maintained by the Office of the North Dakota Attorney General's Office, is what I understand.
So the Attorney General's Office is aware of the concern?
They've got the, they've got the email in their general information box, their office does.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gostad. Mr. Fehlin, I can't let this go related to public health. Remind me, the argument made by the county commission for not having the sheriff's office in the county building is, was it Northeast Human Service? Were they the ones that wrote a letter saying we're concerned about the sheriff's office being in that building?
I, I believe it was Northeast Human Services. The mayor and I did follow up. And I think the more significant concern was having the sheriff's office in, on a floor that would be with very, certain clients. And I think that was the important part of trying to make sure with the six floors that the various departments could be aligned without all the interactions. And I know there were some discussions about renovating the building so that, you know, clients could come in one door and the sheriff's office could come in an alternative door, but it wasn't seen as a viable option.
Does, does anybody know how many employees Northeast Human Service, how many people do they employ? How many, what's the square footage that they have in the building?
I think they have approximately 10,000 square feet, what we saw.
Approximately the same size, right? If the city of Grand Forks offered to pay for Frank, for that group to move into Franklin on Fourth, would the sheriff's office move, move into the county building? It's a, it's an intriguing question. I'd really be interested in somebody telling me if that, if that would happen, because I guarantee you it wouldn't, and it disproves the whole point that they're making. I find it ridiculous. They're egregiously wasting taxpayer dollars. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move adjourn.
Moved by Osowski, second by Weigle. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion adjourned.